Okay, so this is the monthly meeting of the zoning board of appeals. February meeting. Do we need to officially continue the old business?
Yes.
Okay, so can we...
I'm sorry, the 30... The 22 on one was already contained for nine to eleven. We'll just do that. I don't think there's a need to make a decision as well.
They're withdrawing you.
Yes, okay. So, the applicant for thirty-six sixteen twenty-four Coffin Street has requested a withdrawal without prejudice. This is the applicant's attorney here.
No, it's Ryan.
Okay. Does anyone...
Would ask you, I have a second for my associate, Brian, would ask you to do that.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you.
Two and five voting on it. I have a being in five score on it. It's all drawn from the board at the time. It's a time it's never been opened, so it doesn't...
I think all we need is a simple majority. Okay. Sanctity Head Golf Club, I am not sitting on that, so...
Do we have to approve the agenda? In the minutes?
Yes, we do. Anyone like to make a motion to approve the minutes, assuming they've been read?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And approval of the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, so this is application, sorry, forty desk sixteen Sanctity Head Golf Club, one hundred Sanctity Road, Kevin Dale.
Thank you, madam acting chairwoman and members of the board, Kevin Dale for the applicant Sanctity Head Golf Club. This is an application for a modification of special permit and, to the extent necessary, a modification of variance to allow for the construction and use of four duplex dwelling units to be used by Sanctity's employees. When we met the last time on January twelfth, we went through the application and the board had some questions and asked for additional information, so we continued it until today. And the three things the board asked for were a new access plan to show access to the site from Sanctity Road. Secondly, I had mentioned that we wanted to revise the cottage plans to eliminate dormers, so the board asked for design plans. And lastly, because we were, I was requesting duplex units, the board asked that the application be re-noticed and provide for that. All of those things have been done, and we look, I talked to the club's surveyor engineer, Leo Azadorian, about a new access road, and Leo suggested that we might want to relocate the proposed duplex dwellings closer to Sanctity Road and use an existing driveway at club property at ninety Sanctity Road for access. So we have a new site plan that shows those things, and I could give you a copy if you want to have it.
This is plan three, option plan three.
Thanks.
What it shows is the dwellings are located along Sanctity Road. The access is through the, over the driveway at ninety Sanctity Road, which is the house that's occupied by the general manager of the club, owned by Sanctity, and then veers up to the new location. This provides two additional benefits that weren't there before. One, it moves the proposed site of the employee housing away from the Isabel Way neighborhood, and there was some concern expressed about being too close to that neighborhood, especially with traffic. And secondly, although we'll have to put in a septic system, I think we have a pretty good chance to include this site in the Wisconsin Municipal Sewer District, and if so, we'd be able to connect to the municipal sewer system. So that's something that I think is a benefit. The other thing I'd point out is I think the calculation for off-street parking for duplex units would require twenty-four off-street parking spaces. We're proposing nineteen. We think that's adequate, given the fact that the majority of the occupants of the houses will be seasonal employees without cars who will be working at Sanctity. So we'd ask for a waiver of five off-street spaces, but if you require all twenty-four, we could do that, too. It just seems like a little bit heavy to put twenty-four spaces there.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can I ask you, that was not part of the re-notification for labor apartment? I don't believe, let me double check.
It wasn't? No? It's just a, just a point that I'm making, and if it's a problem, we'll be twenty-four.
Or you could come back for a...
I don't want to antagonize the board by coming back all the time, but if I have to, I will. The other thing we've done is revised the design plans for the cottages by eliminating the dormers, and...
You eli... Oh, the dormers are gone now.
Dormers are gone.
Okay. Now I'm looking at an old set of drawings, sorry.
Here's a, here's a plan that shows what we intend to do by eliminating the dormers. Here's the prior plan that showed the dormers.
Right.
Because we're not going to have...
Basically the same, yeah, without the dormers.
There'll be no second-story bedrooms, so...
You don't have the correct drawings in the, in the application?
Let me see, I may have more.
You have the same copy?
Yeah. It's another dormer that's gone.
Okay. Okay, so even though this is part of the new submission, it's not current, it's not current. You went from three to two to zero, it sounds like, dormers.
No more dormers.
Okay.
Same, same structure, non-dimensional.
Same structure, dimensional. Just, just as a point of reference, new proposed roof ridge height elevation from grabs twenty point eight, twenty feet or eight, two oh point eight feet.
Has that gotten shorter, Kevin?
Little bit shorter, because again, we're not having any second-story living, living space in the proposed dwellings. We're about to submit to the HDC for amendment to the existing certificate of appropriateness that allowed the dormer dwellings, and that should be, that application should be going in next week. Lastly, we did re-notice to provide for, request for duplex units in each built, in each of the cottages, which would specifically be three bedrooms on the first floor and three bedrooms in the basement. To the extent of variance is required for that relief, I'd note that there was a prior variance issued that made the specific statutory findings for variance, unique topography, hardship if we weren't able to provide employees with housing, and would rely on that finding to ask you to modify that variance. Clearly, it, there would be a hardship if the club had to rent seasonal housing for its employees in a very scarce and expensive rental market. And I think there's a benefit, clear benefit, to the community, to the health, welfare, and safety of the community, to keep the employees on the club property, not having them commute back and forth from town, and limit traffic in that, to that extent. So would ask for that variance modification, and by the same token, would ask you to modify the existing special permit to allow for these four duplex dwelling units, two of which we want to build in the fall of two thousand seventeen, spring of two thousand eighteen, and to the following year. Would certainly be happy to live with a condition that they be used and occupied only by Sanctity employees and their families, and secondly, that none of these four duplex units could be sold separately. They, they will be part of the club. So the other thing I'd point out, we, Leo Azadorian mentioned, we have a MISA no-take letter for the other site. We may have to refile for this site, but I don't see that as a potential problem. And having said all of this, I'd be happy to answer any of your questions.
So you, just to clarify the parking, you had requested nineteen and twenty-four are required?
Right.
One per bedroom, got it. And does anybody have any questions?
No.
Concerns? Clearly, nobody's in the audience to speak to this.
Can we speak a little bit about the duplex use with regards to zoning?
Yep.
Apparently, it is not a use that's allowed onsite, so I'm looking at some of the staff report, and it says under section one thirty-nine thirty-two B, parentheses two, which reads, "No variance may authorize a use or activity not otherwise permitted in the zoning district in which the land or structure is located."
Well, I think that it is a fair argument that says duplex dwelling is not a use. It's a type of a dwelling, and uses generally are confined to residential uses or commercial uses. But to segregate out and earmark a duplex as a specific kind of use, I don't think comports with the definition, definition of principal use in the zoning bylaw or is prohibited by that particular paragraph. It's a type of dwelling, just as a ranch house is a type of dwelling, or a gambrel house is a type of dwelling. The alternative would be to, and we've asked for this, is to earmark each of these structures as principal dwellings with accessory apartments, but I think that that strains the definition of accessory apartment in the bylaw. And you know, when we first looked at this, and we're trying to determine how the, each of these buildings would be used, the thought was to deem them each to be single dwelling units with living space in the basement and perhaps a microwave for people living in the basement. And frankly, I told, Sanctity wants to be not only a good neighbor, but be upfront about what it's doing, and it makes more sense to have permanent senior employees living on the first floor with their own kitchen, most of whom would be married or with partners and perhaps children, and then seasonal employees in the basement unit with their own kitchen. So that's part of the background here, part of the thinking that we've, we've, we've had and talked about in terms of asking for duplexes.
I also think that the duplex use is actually a safer use when you're taking a basement and converting the whole thing into a dwelling unit by virtue of the fact of the fireproofing, the sound ratings, and everything else that are required to go into the duplex that aren't required to go into a single-family dwelling. So I'm, I'm not objecting to the duplex use, I actually embrace it. I want to make sure everybody understands that, that we have the ability to do that under a special permit or not, but I think it is a safer use and certainly gives more flexibility to the public as well.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any other comments?
You mentioned that you received input from the neighborhood. Was it generally negative?
We, we haven't received any specific input from the neighborhood, but the concern, and someone raised this to me, one of the members of the club, the concern was, we're asking for this relief in the winter when some or perhaps most of the Isabel Way neighbors aren't around, even though they got notice. And if we have, in effect, an aggregate of twenty-four bedrooms, there might be, at least in June, July, and August, some significant traffic, especially if off-hours, if, a lot of speculation here, but if seasonal employees are young and single and get off work, they may be having people over. And we, we simply thought that it would be better to distance and remove these employee housing units away from Isabel, Isabel Road, because it, it's the only real neighborhood nearby.
Yeah.
So that's, that was the thinking anyway, of re-siting the four dwellings.
And you propose to limit each duplex unit to six occupants? Is that correct or not?
Oh, I think so, no more than that. I mean, I think, I think the, the intention clearly would be to limit the upstairs duplex unit, if you will, to a senior employee.
Right.
Like assistant pro or chef with their family, and probably no more than three or four in the basement unit. We're not looking to pack people in these, these, these living units, and frankly, the club has other employee housing units that it uses for some of its employees.
So that would be a total of eight per, four per, per apartment?
Six bedrooms per structure.
Right, but number of occupants? Four per...
I think, you know, to be safe, I think I would, I would, would suggest that the, each duplex unit be limited to no more than six occupants. Knowing that there'll be fewer, but that seems reasonable. If you're thinking of two, perhaps two employees per bedroom in the basement. But I can tell you, as a practical matter and as a management matter, the club tries to afford one person per bedroom as a, as a standard. There are some that double up, but not that many.
How does everybody feel about that, having two per bedroom? Two people per bedroom? Seems like a lot of traffic, a lot of parking potentially, but...
I've been in some of their dormitories, and they're not set up that way, unless they're very big rooms, and they're pretty well-divided in the rooms, so it looks like they try to accommodate their, their people, giving them enough space to feel comfortable and not cramped in them.
What would the occupancy limit be, for instance, for, for an onsite septic system? How would you work that out?
Well, we're, we're thinking of two septic systems, each of which would have capacity for twelve bedrooms to accommodate the twenty-four bedrooms, yeah. But again, frankly, we have to do, we've done soil tests at the other site, everything looked okay, we'll have to do the soil tests there, see what we can do, but I think we'll be okay. I mean, I don't want to get hung up on too many occupants. If the board, in its wisdom, wants to limit each duplex to fewer than six, you know, it's something I'd certainly consider.
You had mentioned the ability to possibly hook up to the size of its sewer.
Yeah, we have to check the force main in Sanctity Road.
Okay.
And Leo is going to do that, and then if it has the, if we can connect, if we can figure out that we can connect it to that force main, my thought would be to propose at the, either this town meeting or the two thousand eighteen town meeting, to include the site in the sewer district, yeah.
So that force main goes down Bayberry Lane?
Yes.
So you, you would have convenient access if they had the flow?
Yes. Yeah.
So it's the only issue that we need to discuss? How does everybody feel about the duplex and the, the project in general? No problem, okay. So it's the only, how does everybody feel about the occupancy limits?
Limiting six employees per unit is what I feel good with.
You're okay with that?
Personally.
Excuse me, you said limiting to six employees per unit?
It would be two people per room.
That'd be two people per room. I could see eliminating a little bit more, but I might just be...
Six employees per unit?
That's two per bedroom.
There's six bedrooms per...
So...
That's two per bedroom.
Yeah.
So I was thinking like maybe five per unit, or, where you might have two people in one of the, two people in two of the rooms and, or, I don't...
I'm okay with six, I think it's fair.
I'm okay with six.
It's, it's in their best interest to keep it, like they're not, they're not...
They're not going to let them run workshop around the neighborhood?
Right, I'm, I'm not worried.
I don't think they're going to be doing slum tours.
I agree, I think it would be in the club, it's in the club's best interest to manage it. I don't see why we need to stop them.
Okay.
But that's just, I'm just one person.
And Kevin, you, you said you were willing to limit the sale?
Definitely, yeah.
No sale?
No individual sales. Let me, just a small point, perhaps six occupants, because they're six employees.
Right.
Because they're, they're...
Children.
They're children.
Wives and husbands.
And spouses, too.
What if someone has kids and can't hire them?
Well, that's true.
You know?
So seasonal employees, not for resale? In nineteen...
Six occupants.
I don't have a problem with that.
The seasonal employees, those only for the basement?
We didn't notice the part of, so can I do that today?
Twenty-four would be fine. The seasonal employees, just to be clear, the first-floor living space of these duplexes would be year-round senior employees, many of whom take off a couple of months in the winter. Some of the occupants, employees in the basement area might be there for more than just the season. For example, CJ Penrose, the Greenskeeper, has employees that work through the end of October into November, so I'm just making that point, but primarily, the basement apartments will be seasonal, employees that work at the club from, literally from early June until Columbus Day.
Just limited to employees of the club?
Yeah, just...
Yeah, maybe not...
I don't think we need to worry about this.
My concern is that it would be used for guests of the club, so I want to make sure that it's clear that it's, you know, a lot of clubs have guests, you know.
If that's a condition...
I just want to make sure it's...
Condition we can live with, a limit just to employees and their families.
Yeah. I think that's a good idea.
Just to employees in there.
No club members, unless they work for them.
Okay, so do we have all the, all the others we want to include with the decision?
I think so.
Yeah.
Right, so that's the, right, that's the...
Does anybody want to make a motion? Is it going to be a special permit?
What are we making, a motion to, to grant both special permit and variance relief?
Correct. So modifying the existing nineteen-three variance as previously modified.
Yeah.
To allow for...
The duplexes.
Structure...
Yes.
Of the special permit is the expansion of the previously non-conforming use, which involves the dwelling, more than three years.
Yeah.
With the conditions.
With the conditions that we've listed.
Right, absolutely, I would make that motion, sure.
I'll second.
And with a modified site plan showing twenty-four parking spaces.
Correct.
That's correct.
And relates to the duplex doors built in conformity with HDC.
Correct.
With no, no dormers?
No dormers.
Yeah.
So I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Who, who voted?
I did.
Okay.
Are you activated?
Sure. Sure.
Mark, you didn't vote, you weren't part of this last time?
I sent him last one, so he can give a positive recommendation.
Okay. Sue, Jim?
Five.
Please send Susan.
Kevin, was that your name on the nineteen eighty-three?
Did I make that variance finding? Yes, I did. And I can tell you, I was not a member of the club at that time, so...
Do you want to pass this to Eleanor for the HDC drawings?
Long time ago.
Okay, the next application is zero five seventeen one forty-one Main Street. We'll be sitting on this.
Can anyone not sit?
I think we'll all, we'll all listen in, and then when we vote, definitely we can pick five, right?
Yep.
Is that all right, Eleanor?
Yes.
Check at the end?
Yes, it is.
Did I make the determination?
Do you want this back? Do you need one of these? No, you have it.
One forty-one Main Street, representing the applicant, is...
Thank you, Mr. Acting Chairman. Kevin Dale, representing the applicant, one forty-one Main Street LLC. Just a point of clarification, the application came in with the prior owner as the owner. Since that time, one forty-one Main Street has purchased the property, so they not only are applying for relief, they own the property. What this is, is a pretty straightforward request for a special permit under section one thirty-nine thirty-three A of the bylaw to relocate a pre-existing non-conforming in-ground swimming pool from the east side yard of the property to the rear north side yard. The existing pool has been on the property for a long time. I think, in fact, prior to nineteen ninety-two, this, this house has a, not to belabor things, but it's the kind of day for it, has a dramatic history, as being deemed one of the haunted houses on Nantucket, and was, was lived in by a, one of the premier women who were in the Ziegfeld Follies, an actress at the early turn of the nineteenth century, and a lot of parties took place there, and then one of our well-known Nantucketers, Pepper Frazier's mother owned the house with George, Pepper's father, and entertained a lot of people with Pepper living in the basement and having the swimming pool at least back to the sixties, so... I thought, just thought that was interesting. When my clients were buying the property, the, the wife was concerned about the house being haunted and wanted to know if she could get insurance against ghosts, but wasn't able to do that. Anyway, property's located in residential old historic district, it has an area of twenty-four thousand seven hundred and twenty feet. It's a big lot, one hundred and forty-eight point thirty-eight feet of frontage on Main Street and a ground cover of nine point eighteen percent. The critical event here is in two thousand eleven, the town meeting voted to prohibit in-ground swimming pools in the old historic district. This was triggered, I was some, I was familiar with it, because it was triggered by the situation on Fair Street where my client wanted to put a swimming pool next to Saint Paul's Church, and members of the vestry didn't like it, so we had a little squabble about that, but were able to put the pool in. But based on that event, Dirk Rogavine, at that time chairman of the HDC, brought the article forward at town meeting to prohibit swimming pools in the old historic district. And I think the rationale was, most of the lots are small, and swimming pools might And I think the rationale was, most of the lots are small, and swimming pools might be considered a nuisance.
So in effect, your application ended up taking it out on everyone else who lives in the ROH that wants to go pool?
Well, not only that one, but twenty-nine Fair Street, Susan de Benedictus, who's trying to put a pool in there as well, that was a big...
Well, that was a different than your client?
Different from my client. My client was named Todd Rapp, who has a house on, on Orange Street. I don't take any blame or any, any guilt for that, I think that we did the right thing.
But this pool existed before that zoning change?
This, this pool has existed...
For a long time.
At least thirty years before the zoning change in two thousand and eleven, and probably more. We, when Mimsey Harbark, Pepper's mother, owned it, there was a pool, so the same pool.
I have a question, Kevin. Did this area get rezoned in the last five years?
No.
From, from R one to ROH?
I don't think so.
Because starting at Jack Warner's house on Main Street, which is approximately one twenty-seven maybe, including the house that was just built by Peter Dupont recently, has a pool, brand-new pool.
Right.
Never was a pool on the property. I thought everything from one twenty-seven up to the monument was R one.
It is.
I know it says ROH on the...
It is R one.
Excuse me?
It is R one.
It is R one.
Yeah, I put a pool in one fifty-three.
Yeah, that's, well, that's what I thought.
This is right on the zoning line.
The town says it's ROH.
Right on the zoning line?
But I think it's a mistake.
Well...
I think, I think Lowell Place used to be the, was where it changed.
How did the Dupont house get...
This is right on the zoning line.
He's legal. He, he isn't a...
Where is the Dupont house?
Dupont's back here, where Joni Craig's, it's right there.
As a point of explanation or clarification, we assumed that it was R one. We looked at a plan prepared by now-deceased John Shigru, said it was R one.
It just got converted to R one.
We're right on the zo...
I think it's been R one, but it may have been changed to ROH recently.
We're right on the zoning line, and we're ROH, trust me.
But the issue is, is even though they had a pool there, yeah, I guess they still need relief because they're moving it.
Well, the HDC has approved the new pool.
Let me, let me continue if I may, okay? And I'm sorry to belabor things. The removal of the existing pool and installation of the new pool has been approved by the Historic District Commission, certificates of appropriateness six-six-eight-two-seven and six-six-eight-seven-one. The building department has issued a building permit to remove the existing pool.
Right.
And a portion of the new proposed pool is ninety feet from a bordering vegetated wetland on the Ernst property to the north, the adjacent lot. It's an interesting wetland, and we think it probably was a pond at one time, they got filled in, but... So we filed a notice of intent with the Conservation Commission and asked for an order of conditions to build a swimming pool. That was heard on February first. At the hearing, David Haynes was representing my client, along with Jesse Dutra, who's gonna build the pool, and the commission at that time was in favor of the pool, but had a question. They wanted to know, what was the water level? How deep was the groundwater? Because they were concerned that the pool excavation might pierce the groundwater level. Apparently, the soil conditions there are perched water table, clay, and then sand. So, the Conservation Commission continued the hearing from the first of February to the fifteenth, and asked us to do, dig a test pit out there to determine the water And we did so. On, on February sixth, Jesse Dutra and Michael Conley were at the site, they dug a test pit at the pool location, determined at the depth of seven and a half feet, it's just sand and loom, no water. And the proposed pool excavation is six and a half feet. So we filed this letter confirming this with the Conservation Commission. I'd like to give you a copy, just to establish that, the water table's not in danger there. I'm not sure that's relevant to the Board of Appeals, but I thought I'd at least mention...
It seemed like the only letters that were written were from the Conservation Commission perspective, that people were concerned about seeing the...
Now, so we expect to get the order of conditions on the fifteenth to go forward, and the proposed new location for the pool won't be substantially detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing pool is for a couple of reasons. It'll be shielded from the viewpoint of Main Street visibility by the garage. Makes sense to put it in the background, aside. One neighbor, at one thirty-nine named, wrote and said, well, she'd prefer that it stay where it is. I can understand that, because she abuts this lot to the west, and the pool now is on the east side, but I think it's important to point out, this proposed pool will be more than forty feet from the neighborhood. There'll be a wedge of wedge, a mesh wire vegetated screen along the property line between the locusts and the neighborhood. There'll also be landscaping vegetation on the west side of the pool. So, it really is a significant distance from the neighborhood, especially if it's distant to ROH district, given the fact that this lot is so big. So I think that, on balance, the new location for the pool makes sense, it's more beneficial to the neighborhood than what's there now, and will be carefully nicely done. So I'd ask for the issue of the study permit.
Is the, is the size about the same?
Just about the same.
What is the effect of not having a building permit or HDC approval initially? Was this, was this a legal...
The existing pool?
The existing pool was, was built in four the HDC.
And how about building permit? What are, was this just built?
It's that old.
It's probably a permit somewhere on the island.
Excuse me?
You wouldn't want to go near it.
Just want to show you the proposed conditions.
It was built, you think, in the sixties, did you say?
I think before that.
Did they grant permits for pools back then?
Why not?
Not until seventy-eight, right? That's when the building department...
Oh, excuse me, for your, Mr. ... That they started, are going towards the pool after seventy-two, less than...
Oh.
Steve...
He's gonna be our town building department historian.
I wouldn't...
No, Steve Butler.
It's gonna be eighteen, twenty-two.
So, what is the size of the proposed pool?
It's forty by sixteen.
Forty by sixteen.
Forty-two.
Forty-two.
By sixteen, and what is the current one?
Three.
Oh, so...
Net gain of sixty-four square feet.
It looks so much longer, but it's really not, only four feet.
That's what's been planned for, I think we should see in the lab, that it's forty-two by sixteen.
Oh, yeah, I see that now. Yeah, the removal was thirty-eight by sixteen, so...
Any comments from board members? Questions?
Jamie?
So the only relief he's looking for is a relief from the bylaw that prohibits pools from the ROH.
It's a special permit, because I think he had one, right? So isn't a special permit?
Special permit.
Yeah.
Actually, it's a special permit under one thirty-nine thirty-three A, it's to alter and expand pre-existing non-conforming use.
Non-conforming use, yeah.
Which is made not conforming by the two thousand and eleven provision passed.
We did this on Pleasant Street, about a year, year and a half ago.
Yep. Took a house that had a pool, moved it, made it larger. Oh, I remember, yeah.
It got built.
Yeah.
Anyone in the audience want to comment on this?
Sound reasonable, Dave.
Can I make a motion?
Please.
I'll make a motion to approve the relief as requested. I guess exterior construction would apply to this. The dates, World Day.
Where are they, Labor Day?
Labor Day. Including landscaping, I mean hardscaping, I should say, right? Stone cutting and everything else.
Who's sitting on this?
Who's seconded that?
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion's been made, you seconded that, any further comments?
So who's voting?
Mark.
Yeah.
Mark, Susan?
Karen.
Lisa?
And, and you, Michael.
Yeah, just do it from Karen, I'll have to...
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Do you want this one?
Kevin, do you need these back?
Yeah. I don't believe I do. I also refuse to make this in Congress. Hard questions, do I go back to work?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Kevin, you're posted at home.
I know.
You don't want to get stuck in the squall.
That's right.
You may recall one Christmas Eve party you had at your house.
I don't know, that's interesting, you should check.
What Blizzard app?
Because I thought it started at Lowell Place.
Okay.
Application zero fifty-one dash zero three, Rugged Scott, Beach Plum, forty B. Representing the applicant.
Jamie Feely.
Just tell us what, what we'd like to do briefly.
So, I'm here, instead of being in front of the HDC, as you guys know, for this project. We want to install a spa, an eight-by-twelve spa, on the backside of three Woodlily Road. It doesn't show it on the plan that you guys have, because we've been kind of continuing to develop the landscape plan as we go, but one thing we are committed to is to have a hedgerow of arborvitae trees on both sides of the property. There's a twenty-five-foot rear setback, so the spa would end up being relatively close to the house. Beyond the property line, there's another twenty-feet of buffer zone between us and the neighbors, so the spa would be completely screened from the road and all three of butters.
Can you, can you help me a little bit to point me even in the right direction? I have no idea what I'm looking at in terms of where it's going.
You want me to come up there?
Yeah, please. I mean, I have this site plan, is it back here?
Okay, now I gotta get myself. Scott's Way, the rugged road, so this is Beach Plum Village between the two.
Right. There's another plan in here that maybe shows some subdivision stuff.
Yeah, the lot is gonna be right around here, but I think there should be us...
This is at the recreation center.
Is it this it?
This is a lot.
Yeah, this is...
Is it this one?
Exactly.
Okay.
This is a much better one, that's a good one there, so it's about one, two, it's the slot right here.
And where's the existing pool?
Existing pool right here.
Is that getting replaced?
No, so the...
So this is a communal pool?
That's the communal pool.
And this is for a homeowner?
This is just a spa.
For an individual homeowner.
Because we did hear something, I don't know if it was last month or the month before, like, about refitting, redoing the pool.
We are, you guys approved that, thank you for that. The plan there is to take out what's been a lot of, the homeowners are picking an undersized pool, that wasn't done so well the first time around, concrete coat being used, layers around it, so that's getting replaced with something much more attractive and much larger. Forty, not that, lots that are worth it, eighteen by fifty-three, I think we can do.
And this is the architectural drawings of the, oh, here's the site plan, okay.
Would this be on a lot?
Exactly.
With one of your houses, but everyone would have an easement to get to?
Nope, this is, this is a market rate lot, so this would be for, this is for an end user.
Oh, so this is just a custom feature?
This is just, we bought the lot, we're building a home there, we don't, because of the circumstances have, you know, rather than going to HDC when you're asking that question.
Okay, now we got it.
So, if I made clarification, with clarification, you are not going to be having a working set ALN, but going on behalf of yourself?
Correct. So, is the, is the notice correct then?
There's no notice, this is, this is...
Oh, okay, other business.
So it's still considered a modification?
So this is what it's gonna look like, but it's gonna be not ready yet.
So actually, that is, so yes, that is a spa that we did, that shows the safety cover, so if we post those fences that you would own this year on the pool, it's a spa about the trees.
So these lots, these market rate lots are fee simple lots, you don't, you don't purchase them as condominium unit?
No.
And then there's a homeowners association.
Correct. And then once you get the CO, then anything thereafter, we go to HDC.
And this would actually come under the comprehensive permit and come to us rather than the HDC?
Really what we're looking for is, as we couldn't, recently, in the month of December, the information that certain requirements were changing, it's substantial, therefore we did read need re-open the year. So subsequent to that, I drafted and had signed the letter, which is, in view of an HDC COA, granted approval for the modification of that design element, which was, you know, we changed the model type of particular cottage, a couple of blocks.
Right, right.
So this is akin to that, it's different, we've never done anything like this.
Right.
I did do a little research, I didn't find anything out of the other forty B projects where this had been requested, but it would have been difficult, I would have had to open every single building permit file to figure that out, because there's no database around the house.
Mm-hmm.
So this is maybe a version of its kind?
Right, because it just seems like a new element, as opposed to like modifying a bunch of...
So this isn't an existing spot in this development?
No.
The picture's just like shown a little bit.
Yes.
No, this is a, a lot that we're, we've actually started with an operation, so it's in the construction.
And you're working outside of the setbacks?
Definitely.
Okay. So the only reason you're here is because you're, you're changing something in the master plan?
Right.
Coming to you guys, so you're in the capacity of HDC.
Okay.
So once the CO is issued for the, for the dwelling, and I believe you're still in the building stages of the lot, so we only just issued you a letter.
That's correct.
If he had had a CO for the dwelling, the lot and locusts would have a CO, he would have to go directly to the HDC, but it would still be advisable for him to come to us to make sure you deem it insubstantial.
I think it's insubstantial, but do we care about a safety cover versus screening and fencing?
As long as it's neat, needs code, it's probably a little intrusive to have a safety cover.
That's gonna be up to the inspector.
Okay.
And my personal opinion is, that he's not gonna accept that. But, only because there's, there's a lot to taking that cover off, it's on a, it's on a suspension, and a child couldn't do it, but it's a lot for an adult to do, so my guess is he's gonna make me put a fence around that.
I actually just went through that as it relates to the two properties on Washington Street, really finished the four test spas, and ultimately, they found that they were spas, and that safety cover...
There's an, yeah, there's an ASTM number that you have to obey, and, but I agree with you.
Yeah, I mean, I would want one of my own.
Hey, by the way, you know, that's another thing we were talking about, the fencing with the arborvitae trees, I would, I would be more than happy to run a wire fence around.
Arborvitae or privet?
That's a rectangle, isn't it?
Arborvitae is what we have planned, just to do it by...
Is it a rectangle or a...
It's a rectangle.
Yeah, I would put an electric cover. I mean, but it's much more money, I understand.
So, the privet exists, and you're talking about this as being arborvitae?
No, the permit doesn't, this is, so okay, there's a twenty-five-foot setback, and then there's a twenty-foot buffer or twenty-five foot buffer, and that's loaded with trees right there.
Oh, got it.
So we don't need to put arborvitae, arborvitae.
Oh, this would be arborvitae. Okay.
Okay.
So, the privet exists, and you're talking about this as being arborvitae?
No, the permit doesn't. This is, so, okay, there's a twenty-five-foot setback, and then there's a twenty-foot buffer or twenty-five-foot buffer. And that's loaded with trees right there.
Oh, got it.
So, we don't need, we can put arborvitae, arborvitae.
Oh, this would be arborvitae. Okay.
So.
Yep, yep. Okay.
What is a three wood lily, you said?
Yes.
Okay.
Eleanor.
I did not fix the staff report. I'm just going to put this out there. I'm not recommending that this suggests that possibility. Given that we bought this type of thing, we never found a plate in this, in the compartment, you could perhaps recommend or make it a confirmation that it is in fact insubstantial, but request, yeah, we will go and put it to HDC. That way, the director of others do get, they don't get noticed.
They don't get noticed.
They don't get noticed, director of others, in cases of possible. But, it's a thought. You could do it that way, so that we know that the letter I would issue would not necessarily be the same as a COA that has the specific details of what kind of vegetative screening and all of those things. I could issue a letter that would have more or less those details that Ed would sign. Ed hasn't been here.
And that was my only question about it. It feels sort of funny that it's coming under the comprehensive permit, because it's a, you know, it's a different element. It's not...
But Eleanor, isn't that, you're saying it's insubstantial, but then you're saying it's substantial enough to have to go to HDC?
No, I'm not, I'm...
Well, no, I'm saying you're suggesting...
I'm saying, I'm not suggesting that it's substantial in requires a public area. I'm suggesting that it might prove us to have the HDC final approval of the installation in terms of the screening and so forth, but it's not a requirement. If you deem it insubstantial, you can deem it to be substantial, rather than the letter that I think we're doing. Do my best to provide for what the building department would request in terms of HDC approvals, just that we haven't done this before. It's not contemplated in complment. It would be new territory.
Yeah, I, I, I think it's a little bit of new territory, but I don't think it's liable to the substantial levels of the...
I, I agree. I think it's insubstantial.
So, but I do feel, I feel the same way a little bit about the requirements of making sure it's...
I mean, I can't imagine the HDC would have any issue with it, but I think we should put in our letter that it has to be screened with the arborvitae on the two, I don't know if that's north and south or east or west, or what the...
It's, it's not quite like that, but...
The two side yards.
Yeah, right.
Need to be screened. Right. And that you're going to be using that type of cover.
Do you need, just, just to, just to be clear on that point, this is actually a double curb cut, right, by Lisa? So, the driveway comes down here. So, the arborvitae on this side would be like the backside, but obviously, it still creates screening to turn that. And just to put it out there, the owner on both sides is John Prosser, the rug is Scott and I'll speak, and we're all aware of it, all the, um, the corporate thing.
Do you still have to protect the neighbors by fence from the spa?
How required by code.
Okay.
Would you feel better if he had fencing?
I, I frankly would never do this myself, because it's too dangerous.
You put a gate there.
But, but I also know, I mean, I'm not going to argue with the state building code.
It, it is one of those things that's a little bit...
I know that it takes a lot to open up one of those tension springs.
I personally would be all for and probably will put in a wire fence, as opposed to pick your fence all the way around, because we may not have the arborvitae, the hedge there anyhow. And I would love to put the fencing out. That's another, you know, I may be back here in front of you guys with a couple other things as the development just continues on. But, I did want to start the permitting process for this, so that we can install these things.
I mean, there's ample, there's two locations where we could easily put in gates if we felt like that was an important thing for you.
Well, it's, it's, it would be if I owned it.
But not for...
Yeah, whatever is allowed is allowed. I'm not going to argue with that.
Yeah, okay.
I share your sentiment, yourself.
And, and, you know, the other thing, of course, you could do is to have the doors alarmed. But, I, I guess if it were, just knowing the conservation end of it, the fact that how, you know, how long it takes to get the tension cover off, put it back on, it's pretty heavy, takes two people, I would go for, save the two, three grand for the cover, the tension cover, and put a ten thousand dollar electric cover on. But, because you keep it at, what, a hundred and three degrees?
I don't think so. I think you keep it at like eighty-five, because it's, it's not enough water. It's, it's, it's not that much water, and so that you can use spawn for twenty, twenty-five minutes, and you have eighty-five degrees of cell. So, it could be how I supply a change of spot.
Okay. This is our last application, isn't it? No problem. You're welcome to come here. Are you here to speak about this, this application by chance?
I just wanted to hear about it.
Okay. So, this, this is, what's the name of the road?
I guess not.
Three Wood Lily.
Three Wood Lily.
Oh, I was thinking the one that one person made.
We already heard that one.
Oh.
Sorry.
Okay.
And Eleanor can tell you about the disposition of that in an hour or later, whichever you prefer. So, have we heard enough?
And Mike, I would just say that if there's, if there's, you know, relative to the fence, if you guys wanted to make that a formality, I don't have any issue, but I would just ask that if it be wire.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with wire at all. Hidden in the, in the hedge?
The HDC hates it, but probably some of them.
Yeah.
But arborvitae doesn't lose its leaves, right?
But I'm, I'm just thinking, you know, I just built a pool, and they wanted it protected from the neighbors. The closest neighbor was, you know, five hundred feet away.
You still have to, you still have to fence your property.
Yeah. So, I don't know why you wouldn't have to fence this.
Because they have a formula of depth and cubic footage of the area.
Yeah, cubic footage.
And if it has a depth, and, I mean, there's some elaborate calculation.
I know how long it takes to, and put on and take off, this cover he's proposing. And it's not a simple, you know, it's, it's nothing that, you know, you would, you would go out at nine o'clock at night and take off, and then we install, so.
At ten-thirty, yeah. Yeah. I understand. But that's, but you're saying that's not really your concern. That's...
No, that's, I'm concerned, but I'm not, it's not going to affect my policy.
Yeah, right, 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 right.
As I said, I share your same concern.
Yeah, I bet you do. Eleanor.
So, once again, if I'm going to be issuing the letter in view of the HDC COA, I would like a plan that is more or less HDC compliant, but I have here is not.
We should update.
So, something that the HDC would accept, showed all the different elements. I do inspections of these types of things, but this is definitely not provided. For reference for connection...
Getting back to Jamie's question or point, we are the HDC, so we can approve a hedge with a wire fence inside.
Yeah, that's fine.
And is that what we're doing?
With arborvitae.
Okay.
And the spa is eight by eight, eight by twelve?
Eight by twelve.
And you'll just specify coping material, blue stone, is that what it says? Yep, blue stone coping and the cover. And it's just going to be coping around, it's set into the grass.
Actually, we're here now, it's up to you guys, but if you guys wanted to, as part of this, say that you are okay with a fence from here to here, and here to here, that would save you a trip back.
Because you want to put that in?
Yeah, and then I could put a gate in at the driveways, and then I would just have a wire.
Then you wouldn't need to do the cover.
I'm, I'm still going to have the cover anyway, because there's a, there's a, you know, energy element to that. But, we're going to have to...
Yeah, okay. So, there would be, so you want me to just...
I'm more comfortable with that, I think.
I'll just mark this up.
What exactly can stop it?
Yep. And that only goes to here, and then this is going to be...
Now, an HDC approvable fence.
Fence and gate.
There's actually three fence types that are readily used and are pre-approved in there. I think that, you know, like one is the picket, one's got the cap on it, and maybe it's just two, and a bunch of different colors.
And what do you, what is the color of the house?
Platinum gray trim with black sash.
Oh, it's my office. Um, so are you going to, do you think the fences will be painted?
So, I'd let's say platinum gray.
Okay. And do you guys care what type fence it is?
Us?
Yeah.
No, I mean, it's one of the approved ones. I don't...
Type one, two, or three?
It'd be four foot tall.
Yep. Right. And it has to swing out, right?
Yes.
Okay.
The fence will be four feet tall?
Yeah.
It's swinging out to the gate?
Yeah.
So, those and stuff watch.
But no other terrorists involved in this, right? Not that we would have to prove...
There, there, the plan ultimately is going to have a granite patio in here.
But that wouldn't have to come to us, would it?
No, because every one of them has one already, so.
To get us on that?
Yeah.
There's going to be a hardscaping application to the HDC for the downs of those elements.
Will you wire the...
No, not for those elements.
Oh.
If they're not all on a plan, it's all spelled out.
Right.
And you can't take any action on it.
Right. The only thing that I spelled out was the coping, the fencing, the arborvitae. I didn't put in with the wire fencing, but...
So, fence will be around like...
It's inside the hedge.
It's inside the arborvitae hedge.
Around.
You can write that in, wire and match.
Will you create a site plan for Eleanor, so she has it?
It's being developed right now.
Okay, then we can just review that.
Okay.
Okay, great.
Okay.
It'll be back to the letter.
Okay.
And I probably will have Michael sign it.
Who's sitting on, on voting on this? Okay. Jeff, you want to vote?
Sure.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Bye. Right on schedule, the snow started. I don't think I was...
Signed a couple of them here. Want to do a motion to adjourn?
I think I'll let you do that.
I don't want to.
Is there anything else to discuss, Eleanor?
No, I think, what, you said you would not be present today?
I will not be here.
You said you'd be here.
It's actually red. You will be?
I will be here. I will be here. You will?
It's waterproof.
Yeah, I just got one, an orange one. They worked well.
They're great.
Yeah.
Anybody else know what they're upcoming out?
Ed was talking about being gone in March. I'm not sure his plan's changed.
But as far as just, to make it go, you know that you might be not here.
Yes, that's correct. All right, Karen made a motion to adjourn.
Yes, I made the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Much more?